About one minute.
Yeah.
Motion to close. Thank you for joining us for our Select Board meeting for October 7th. We've already said the Pledge of Allegiance. We've been in executive session since six o'clock. So we'll start with any announcements. Jay, do we have any announcements coming out?
The one item, Madam Chairman, is a note from our health agent, Beverly Herschorn, relative to webinar on health officers. She heard from Catherine Brown, who is heading the Arbor Response Team for the Mass Department of Public Works Health, and reiterated the position of the State Department of Public Health. The schedule of dusk times after which outdoor activity should be avoided for higher-risk communities is still in effect. The department has no capability of monitoring on a community level whether or not there has been sufficient time below freezing to inactivate the mosquito species carrying EEE. At the present time, temperature levels, pesticide applications are not effective. Personal protection measures are the effective measures to prevent exposure. Therefore, until we are sure that the frost level has been sufficient to inactivate the mosquitoes, the schedule remains in place. The department will advise the public when dusk dawn, outdoor activity may be resumed. That will not happen until there has been a substantial frost everywhere in the state and there is a field, and there's fielding that the evidence of mosquito activity has ceased.
Any other announcements?
Well, isn't there a flu shot distribution tomorrow, Tuesday, from eight to 12? Because that's out for right.
There is a flu shot clinic tomorrow.
So people can go down to the center and get your flu shot.
There's a significant shortage right now. There's a significant shortage on food.
Oh, a shortage?
Yeah.
So get away.
Yeah, CVS, all their locations are out. They haven't received shipments. Crowned shipments are very slow.
All right. We've got it here.
Any other announcements? All right. I wanted to say that on Monday, October 14th, we're going to be celebrating the 100th birthday of a World War II Bronze Star recipient, Mr. Conrad Drescher, at the East Long Meadow Skilled Nursing Home. Our people are going to go over and celebrate at 2:00 if you know Mr. Drescher, at 305 Maple Street. But happy birthday to Mr. Drescher. Now we'll move on to resident comments. Do we have resident comments?
Hi.
Hi.
How are you?
Fine. Thank you. Just sit down, state your name and your address, and though we don't, it doesn't mic you, it will, for people back home, can hear you. Speak into the microphone. Thank you.
All right. Hi, everybody. I'm Carl Sweeney. I live at 124 Whitman Road in Long Meadow. I moved to Long Meadow in 1999. I wanted a good school system for my children. I wanted to reside in a nice quiet suburban town. It's been an excellent place to raise a family. When I moved onto Converse Street, or I lived on Converse Street first, I knew where I was moving to. I knew I was going to get traffic. I knew the kids were going to have to play in the backyard. And I didn't have any frustrated, a reason to be frustrated because of the traffic, because I moved there. I moved in and it was there. And it's been the same way since I lived in Springfield when I was a kid traveling Converse Street through the 70s and 80s. So I kept my kids in the backyard away from danger. Now we're getting the new gas pipeline, right? We're getting some construction and some projects that's going in my neighborhood now. Now, if that's moving in next to me, I didn't move next to it. So I understand there's going to be five unsupervised buildings. There's going to be gas released several times a day. It's close to my home. It's a health hazard for my family and for my neighbors, and I didn't choose it. Again, that's moving to me. I didn't move to it. There's an elementary school nearby, too, which is dangerously close. At least three times a week, I drive up and down Shaker, well, I drive up and down Shaker Road a lot, but at least three times a week, there's golf carts maintenance. Everybody's crossing the street. I always stop, and I let them cross because I'm looking out for their safety. I read in the paper about $2.7 million easement for the pipeline. Long Meadow Country Club's not looking out for my safety. I'm their neighbor, and I've been driving that road for 20 years, or longer. And they didn't advertise it too loudly because I didn't know about it until it happened in the paper. Of course, it happened a little while ago in Wolf Swamp when I saw the little yellow sticks went up the Wolf Swamp Road. Again, that's close to me. But I didn't know what was going on. But I'm concerned about how many buildings, the owner of the buildings, you know, the different laws governing which building is going to be managed by who, or what law meets 1938, or whatever the laws are. And it just adds to confusion. And as a neighbor, right, I'm concerned about the health risks, the gas releasing several times a day on man station, and when they call it the incineration zone where I live, it's kind of tough to take. It's kind of concerning. So Long Meadow's always been a town where we take care of each other, from the largest house to the smallest house, from the oldest house to the newest house. Everybody has been included. Nobody was left out. We take pride in our town, and I feel that the neighbors surrounding this product are being left out. I'm disappointed when I think about the impact my home's value. It's my largest asset. I expected my investment was relatively safe. Now, where I live, I don't have the largest house, but I'm in the best town. And it's hard enough to explain the triple E virus, you know, how it can affect everybody, without trying to explain why all of a sudden our house is in a risky area to my kids. So I'm asking the Select Board to help us reject this product moving forward, or, you know, if we can recommend that alternative fuel sources be used or considered, and have the station's location being in a remote area away from schools and neighborhoods.
Thank you. Do you want to give that to Deb?
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Marantz, and I live at 117 Rugby Road. I'm speaking tonight as a resident and as Chair of the Long Meadow Pipeline Awareness Group. My purpose tonight is to report on the progress that our group has made in our efforts to prevent the construction of an industrial gas facility on Long Meadow Country Club property and a high-pressure pipeline that would run through highly-traffic Long Meadow streets. I'm also here to make an important request of the Select Board with respect to these efforts. As you're undoubtedly aware, our group has spent the past 12 months educating the community about this project and the health, safety, and economic risks attached to it. We've drawn residents to the March Energy Facility Siting Board Meeting, where 40 people testified in opposition to the meter station and pipeline project, with no residents speaking in support of it. We've proposed strict gas emission zoning bylaws that were approved by the Planning Board and passed at our May Town Meeting by an overwhelming majority. For the June election, we lobbied residents to vote in favor of a non-binding resolution that asked the Select Board to investigate purchasing the two-acre lot as a way of thwarting the proposed construction. With an unusually high turnout, voters endorsed that measure by a 68% to 32% margin. Finally, at an August special town meeting, voters passed a Planning Board-approved measure that would ban the construction of any industrial gas facility in a Long Meadow residential zone. Once again, voters made their position very clear. Out of 259 voters present, only three cast negative votes. In all four efforts, Long Meadow residents sent an unequivocal message, rejecting the gas meter station and the high-pressure pipeline that would be its result. Having worked last year educating residents and our elected officials, we're returning to those officials now to ask for their help in educating specific state and federal agencies about the impact that this project will have on our community. Again and again, these local, state, and federal officials have asked us where the Long Meadow Select Board stands with respect to this issue. And this is where the Long Meadow Select Board comes in. Tonight, we're asking you to state publicly, as our elected governing body, that building an industrial gas facility on the current Long Meadow Country Club site is not acceptable, and that construction on any Long Meadow site needs to be premised on acquiring town permits and site approval. We don't want residents of the Hazardville neighborhood to wake up one day to the sound of bulldozers tearing up that two-acre lot without knowing that the Select Board has done everything within its power to discourage the construction of this facility in their neighborhood, and that the gas companies involved respected the rule of law throughout the process. Given the continuing list of concerns associated with gas power infrastructure and the adamant opposition of the majority of Long Meadow voters, we believe that it is not too much to ask you, our governing body, to express your disapproval of the Long Meadow Country Club site, and to remind the gas company that they are not above the law when it comes to doing business in this town. Please issue a public statement that expresses these sentiments so that town residents can be assured that you have their best interests in mind. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes. Yes, sir. Good evening. Tom Shea, 81 Green Meadow Drive, 31-year resident. First off, I'd just like to thank the Select Board for having the town-wide forum to discuss the upcoming town warrant November 5th. I think it was informative. I would like to ask that the presentation on the public works facility that was presented at the town forum of September 25th, that was presented by Weston and Sampson and Colliers on behalf of the town, be posted to the town website. I have been provided a copy of it, thank you, but I think it should be posted to the town website. I haven't been able to find it, so I think at the meeting, we'd agree that that would be posted. Secondly, at that meeting and earlier in the day, I had asked about the $1.7 million contract that was awarded to Monford to move the asbestos-containing material from Dwight Road to Tina Lane. In the morning, and then later that evening, it was confirmed that that indeed was a no-bid contract. In the building committee minutes prior to that, Mr. Gold, I commend you for asking the question of, given the size of the contract, should this go out to bid? In those minutes, there was no mention of why it did not go out to bid. I believe at the morning meeting I had, and then at the town forum later that evening, I was told that folks would get back to me, and more importantly, the taxpayers, on why that contract was no bid, and that you would be getting in touch with the former town manager, Stephen Crane. To this point, I've heard crickets. I'd like a response. You've got my email. You have my phone number. Maybe we'll hear about it November 3rd at the town meeting. It will be asked at that meeting. There's also other government entities that may ask the same question, so I would appreciate an answer, or I believe it will be asked at the November 3rd meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Shea, I told you I'd get back to you. You should have sent me an email or phone call. I forgot to get back to you. I do have your answer. Send me an email. I'd be glad to respond to you. Thank you. All right. Any other public comments? How about Select Board comments? Mark?
You're right. Usually you don't answer publicly in these meetings.
No, we don't.
But you just did.
I will be glad to get back to you, and as I said before the meeting, if you had contacted me, I would have been glad to contact you back.
I talked to Mr. Moni today, and I will be able to get an answer, so thank you for getting back to me.
Be glad to.
I'd like to just add to the agenda under Old Business, an update on the Streetlight Purchase and LEB conversion.
Oh, sure. Okay.
Considerable progress made on that.
All right. We'll get to that. Thank you. Any comments?
Well, I just, I was talking to a florist this weekend who was telling me that he did some arrangements in town for the tour that they had for the libraries, and he said that they printed up 700 tickets, and then they had to print up additional tickets. And, you know, in our job, it's nice to know when things go well. It's always great that people are supporting the libraries, but it also happened probably because of the Brewer Young Mansion, and people wanted to see the Brewer Young Mansion. And I know there was a lot of discussion in town as to, should that mansion be saved or should it be torn down? And I think it's just another way of the town responding to the fact that they do want it to be around. And so it's nice to see that there's some payback in terms of, to the library, in terms of that, you know. I didn't get to see it, but I look forward to seeing it soon.
Thank you. Any other?
Yeah. Another note on what Tom was saying. All the flowers for that event were donated by one of the residents of our community. He grows flowers at the community gardens. I see the three or four florists in there cutting flowers were all dispersed all over the town. It was a contribution he made on his part. Tom Kanna, the flower man extraordinaire.
Yeah. All right.
All right. I also wanted to talk about, Tom and I went to a meeting with the MMA Municipal Association. It was a great meeting about Western Mass towns and the rural communities, but they talked about the tax ceiling, and I was so excited. The Senator Commerford and Senator Lesser put a special amendment, and I sent that out, another last-minute sendout, I got from Senator Lesser's office.
My print was still cooling down.
For an amendment on the education bill in regards to the fact that the two-and-a-half ceiling is really going to affect our ability to fund our schools in the near future, and we're not the only town. We're, I think, is it FY '23 where we're going to be hitting the ceiling?
24, under certain assumptions, yes.
Under certain assumptions. So if we're lucky, we keep it out to 24, maybe we can push it out another year or so. And that law says we cannot tax above $25 over $1,000 unless it's a debt exclusion item like the high school. And once we do that, we can't raise two and a half, or we're going up to 1.75, and we're sort of looking at a possibility of $2 million cuts or more to our schools and our public safety. What I thought was very interesting in them discussing it is Senator Lesser said 42 out of the top 50 towns in tax rate are in Western Mass. Springfield has a higher tax rate than Wellesley. So this is an issue of fiscal mismanagement, but unfair calculation of our property tax based on the valuation of homes and the cap that is integral to this law is the same cap for every community across Massachusetts. So the same cap for Boston and the same cap for Pelham, and who's in trouble? It's Pelham, Long Meadow, those towns. So I was really happy to see that it was being discussed throughout the conference, and I went around to several of the various communities such as Pelham, Palmer, and all of us realized that we need to have a solution. Fortunately, we have our Tax Ceiling Task Force that's working on it, and the Select Board's been working really hard the past few years, whether it's a stormwater utility, regionalization of services with the dispatch, or just decreasing our tax levy every single year to help prepare for the inevitable. It's all good financial practices. It's going to delay, not stop. School Committee's been working hard with us on the levying limit, but they've also been on this task force to decide how we're going to solve it. So I want to take this pause to say thank you, Senator Lesser. He spoke about it on the floor, Senator Commerford, and it's now becoming part of the discussion. When we talk about funding of schools, when we talk about local aid and everything, it's a, something that needs to be addressed and addressed soon because it's a serious problem for Long Meadow that we are going to be facing. Right now, I always get confused, and I'm sure residents do, we're in FY...
20.
20. Okay? So when we say we're looking at FY...
24.
24. That's sooner than you think. So also, I was thinking that maybe the Select Board might want to consider, as projects this year, maybe putting together a subcommittee to look at our current and possible pilot agreements. I understand our pilot agreement with Bay Path University is ended or is ending, which is, I think it's...
Has ended, I think, June 30th.
It already ended.
I believe so.
But there are many other organizations in town that don't pay taxes, and we could look at some sort of agreements with them. Also, maybe we can consider a task force with our neighboring towns, looking at possible shared services and assets. We've been sort of doing that in bits and pieces, but maybe if we sit down with the Town Council of East Long Meadow, we can come up with some more ideas. So I just wanted to throw it out there on my comments that we could consider in the future.
Maria, I just, I wanted to add on, I know I just paid my taxes. I just got them in. And as we look at the price of our taxes, at least we're not in Boston. They were announced that Boston is now number three in terms of the highest price rates in the country for houses, and then they are number one in terms of what you would pay for rental apartment. And it's, those aren't the kind of things you want to be at the top of the list for, but at least, you know, we're not on those lists.
But we are at the top of the list. We have a higher tax rate than Boston. So that tells you something seriously wrong with the system when that's the case.
We have the highest tax rate, but the 43rd highest average tax bill, and people need to keep that in mind. It's not fiscal mismanagement.
Keep in mind that the house in Boston's worth 2.5 million versus 300,000. Let's tell the whole story.
That's why Berry's having the problem, Pelham's having the problem, the small towns, and I was really happy that the rural, it was a conference mainly on rural towns, talked about this as a serious problem. Yeah?
Are we still in comments?
Yeah, we still, you can go back to a comment now.
Yeah, I have a comment. I have a grumble to make. I think it's going to touch a lot of people out there. We, as a community, outlawed the use of plastic bags, only to be slapped with 10-cent fee on a paper bag to carry home our groceries. Now, something's wrong with it. Something's terribly wrong with what happened in our community. Now, the state of Connecticut implemented a flat 10 cents per bag as a tax, a flat tax. We did not implement any taxes in here for paper bags. It's just something that all of our businesses have assumed and taken effect, and they're charging now consumers 10 cents a bag. I think it's wrong. I don't think it was intended, and it's a reverse action for a good thing. We did something environmentally sensitive for our community, and it's hurt our residents. I don't know if 10 cents is not much, but when you add up all the plastic bags or all the bags that are bought every day, it's a lot of money at the end of the year. You know, we have purposely said all along, we're going to keep one tax rate in this town because we thought it was fair. Well, I don't think it's fair that we're charging people something that used to be free. That's my editorial for tonight.
Thank you. Any other editorial slash comments? Why don't we move on to, since we have the chiefs here for, you're here for Westcom? Do you want to come in under new business? We'll move on up to the Westcom update.
Erin could not make it tonight. She had a conflict, and she said her apologies. I just talked to her. She was going to try to make it here, but with the weather, I didn't want to race and down. So Westcom's moving along fairly well. Thank you, Ms. Angelis, for attending a couple more meetings there, and gain the flavor for the hard work we're doing. So where we stand today? We received a couple real good parts of news the last two weeks. 911 has approved our full operating budget that we submitted to them, which is, if you recall, there was a concern about their commitment to the 75%. They have approved the full 75%, so we have that documented. So that's a significant financial reduction for our costs long-term. We are moving towards partial implementation on October 15th. October 15th was our go-live date, but let me just preface that, it doesn't really change much in Long Meadow. It's the fact that our primary 911 system in Long Meadow will be moved to a secondary 911 system. Our calls will be routed through, and this is all just a computer game, but routed through Chickaby back to Long Meadow. What that does, it frees up that money from the state, so right then is when that, the incentive grant kicks in for the 75%. We are, we're worried, a little worried about some struggles with the finances because right now we've been carrying Westcom basically on, in hiring and training employees on Chickaby's expense. We're getting to the point now where we're going beyond what Chickaby needs for dispatchers. We're still, Chickaby kicked some money into Bridges for that, and just trying to get all the technology lined up in time. So state 911 was very good to work with. They made this suggestion as a solution. It works for us, and it brings the money home a lot quicker, so. So right now, it's prorated because we're at the year, but they'll be kicking in about $1.75 billion into the project, so that's big for us. I'll let John do the operational part, but I'll just say that the connectivity aspect of it, which we're tying the two towns together, is about 85% done. We've had a couple snafus with that. There's multiple vendors that do the linking and networking, and sometimes these vendors don't always work well together. There's been a lot of coaching, and we found out today that we have two vendors that have a network that's this far apart. Either one of them supply the six cables that tie the switches together. So we went back to them. I mean, it's a lot of simple detail stuff like that. We have consultants working for us. They work through and solve the problems. Our microwave system is up and operational, so we're tied to the air, but like I told you a couple times before, the redundancy of the land network is still not up and operating. So John, talk about the operation as best you can.
Yeah, we'll get through this. What it looks for, what we're looking at right now is, as Chief Tiber said, we're going live with 911 calls being transferred from Chickaby to Long Meadow. What that does is free up the grant money so that they're able to hire, train, and certify additional dispatchers, which we're going to need to do. Our anticipated start date is going to be December 2nd. Once we have a full complement of those dispatchers, what we'll do is take our Long Meadow dispatchers. There's four out of five of them that will be sitting in chairs over in Chickaby, and one of them will be retiring. From the, from October 15th till December 2nd, we'll be operating as we currently are. We'll be stationing, we'll be stationing one dispatcher in our dispatch center, and we'll continue to operate how we are currently. We will be, and will be considered an EMD resource at that time, which means we'll have the ability to go to, we'll be able to solicit funds from Chickaby to pay for our dispatchers from October 15th till December 2nd.
Yeah, from Westcom's.
From Westcom's.
Trading incentive.
Okay. As far as the lobby is concerned, right now we have a secure lobby. We also will be installing our intercom system, which will be activated when someone comes in and requests assistance. That's where I am.
Any questions?
So if, when people go to lobby, will the people in the dispatch center in Chickaby be able to see them on camera and talk to them?
Yeah, we currently have two cameras in the lobby. They'll be visible from Chickaby, and the way the call box works is as soon as you press the button, it rings right down to Chickaby, and there's immediate response by dispatch from Chickaby.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Mark?
Chief, can you explain a little bit more about what you mean that 911 calls starting October... October 15th will be routed through Chickaby? What does that mean, and is there any, you know, routed through the west coast as far as electronics concerned, but is there any impact on service level?
No.
No, it's not.
It's all, it's all done electronically, as far as much as I know about the process.
So it's not somebody in Chickaby answering the phone and then calling back to the Long Meadows, it's not that stuff?
No, it's, so there's two, they can transfer direct, but as we move forward, they will start answering them and transferring for a training aspect. And there'll be days when they actually, we go live with the radio system, and they'll actually, we'll have dispatchers in Long Meadow and Chickaby, Chickaby will do the dispatch aspect of it. So there'll be different phases, Mark, as I think is what I'm trying to explain.
Okay, that makes sense. The other thing is, the fire department, my understanding is, you guys do your own dispatching, not it's 911 call that comes in to the police department, goes to the fire department. Is that going to now come from Chickaby to your department, still do the dispatching? So that won't change?
So initially, nothing will change, it'll still go to the Long Meadow Police Department, they'll hit the button, set the alarm off in the station, and we start the transition when we get our dispatcher numbers up at certain selected shifts, we'll start training shifts, but they'll take the call, they'll actually do the EMD, emergency medical dispatch, I'm sorry, in Chickaby and actually do, do the tone in, do the routing traffic for us also. So, it's going to be staged, and I, and I kind of wish, Erin, Erin's got a pretty good feel about how quickly that was going to happen. I will tell you that, I think, if you would have asked this two weeks ago, we probably felt like we were being a little bit rushed into this because of the finances, and that was one of the reasons we went back to 911 and said, listen, you know, we kind of feel like we're moving a little too quick here to do this transition. And John and I had a lot of heart to hearts about that, and 911 did come up with this solution that made us, I think, both feel a lot better about, we're going to have a little slower transition, make sure that all the i's are dotted and all the t's are crossed on it, so.
So then when we go live on December 2nd, we're very confident it's going to go very smoothly.
I haven't looked at my calendar, what day of the week is December 2nd?
Monday, I believe.
It's got to be a Monday.
No, that's fine, so you're going...
We're definitely not doing a Friday, we know that.
No, I just...
Any other questions?
Or maybe we should do a Friday.
I don't know, what's the quiet day of the week?
There is one.
There is none.
Thank you.
At least we know the offices are open on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
And so what is Long Meadow's share?
So probably, the assessment?
What are we paying out in the budget? Have you put aside?
Of that first year, again, the gap is 600 and some odd thousand, we own, we own about 20% of that, so it'll be $120,000, which, again, is half of what we're spending on dispatchers right now for that period of time.
Just their personal expenses, their salaries, but that doesn't include benefits, so that additional benefit is going to be picked up by WestCom, so we're not, we're not bothered with retirement, insurance.
And in the FY21 grant, we have all of our infrastructure for the whole new radio system already approved, so that, that's a, I mean, that's a huge capital expense that we're pulling right, right out of Long Meadow, so.
When do you finish your budget for next year?
We'll probably have to start it at...
For WestCom?
Yeah, FY21, I would say March will probably, it doesn't have to be submitted until May, I believe, it's either April or May, I'll have to look at this schedule, so, a little bit timeline. And there'll probably be some adjustments to the budget, I mean, I think as we operate for, for a few months, you know, there's already a few things we've identified that this budget probably, you know, should entail, but it's being covered by training incentive grants. There's two sets of grants that fund this also, it's an important distinction, there's the operational grant, and there's the training grant. The training actually picks up a lot more expense than you would think, so, there's, the finances on this actually look really good, so.
And there's a third grant, which is a development.
Development, yeah.
Which allows them to build the infrastructure.
That's going to roll off, the development and the training grants will roll off.
We can go back, or WestCom can go back in the future if they need to enhance some of the technologies, such as radio systems and things like that.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just, so these grants, will they be funded next year, the year after? I mean, how long are these going to, are we going to get?
Hopefully forever, but...
Hopefully forever, but the state is, so far, is going to support this project?
They've demonstrated so far, Tom, a pretty thorough commitment to make this work. They obviously don't want to see this to be, live forever as a two-town regional dispatch, I mean, they've been very, you know, they've been, they've been marketing for us, we've had other communities approach us already. We've not been reluctant, but we've been cautious about entertaining any new proposals right now, we really want to get this thing up and running, have a demonstrated product, know what all the real costs are before we can develop that menu. Not all, taking out all communities is alike, we've had communities that just want fire dispatch, some want just police dispatch, so, so there's some idiosyncrasies we need to look at, so.
Oh, good. Well, I, I get the impression from surrounding communities that they have a lot of respect for Long Meadow and the way we do things, and, you know, your presentation tonight's just another example of how you're trying to pace it so that it goes without a hitch, and so, thank you for...
Yeah, I want to give a lot of credit to our partners in Chickaby, they've been fantastic to work with, and without their partnership, we never could have made this work. I mean, you've been doing this a lot, this longer than I have, and we've experienced all the different dissertations.
And they have the same goals as we do, they enhance some of our service to our customers, which are the citizens of our community. Same goals.
I know it's been a lot of extra work, so thank you very much. Now that you're where, you're the head of the board.
Yeah, it's...
Good job, too.
Congratulations.
It's been a little bit the last couple of weeks.
Could have picked a better man.
Chairman, while the chiefs are here, could they talk briefly or update the board on the Columbia Gas moratorium?
They want to roll right into that, or you want to leave?
No.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, thank you for coming, Chief.
More good news, then.
Yeah, so, do you want me to go into the... Yeah, a little bit, yeah. So, as everybody is aware, on October 3rd, Department of Public Utilities placed a second moratorium on Columbia Gas. It does impact our surface zone with Columbia Gas, so basically, moratorium requires Columbia Gas to have any work excluding emergency work, and even there's some limitations on that. It all has to be pre-approved by the Department of Public Utilities. There were some questions that came up and developed through the Western Mass Fire Chiefs, which I worked on getting some answers to, and really, what did it mean for municipal notification? There is no municipal approval of the work, it is solely a notification of work that DPU approves, okay? So I just want to be clear about that. I checked with DPU to see who they actually contacted Long Meadow, who the contact was, it was actually Andy Carr, who's the one who was, he was listed as the contact. So today, I spoke with Amy Henderson from, and he followed up with an email from Columbia Gas, and I changed our municipal contacts to myself and Mario, so, for some redundancy. Obviously, when we get a permanent town manager, I'll update that at that point, so the three of us will be notified. So, you know, I think some folks have probably seen and probably understand that this, this company's had some issues, we've had some issues in town here. So I would just like to communicate to the board, I think this is an opportunity. I know, Mark, in the last time, you know, you guys have done some, some stuff on which I was very supportive of, but I have some frustrations as a public safety leader in town with this company. We get called about gas leaks, you know, fairly as winter comes in all the time. We go out to these leaks, and we'll find out that Columbia Gas is already aware of them, that they've been actually going on for months and we're not, not aware of them. There are lists that come out, but they're outdated, they're basically useless information. So I would like to, I would like to ask the board to support, requesting that Columbia Gas monthly provide us a report of the location, grade, when it was reported, and when the actual repair date is for gas leaks in our community. I'd like to take a more active role of watchdog in this company, at least my department. I think if we have that information, we can gauge really how well they're responding to our citizens and protecting them. I can tell you that, you know, especially in the last year, couple years, we've really paid attention to it, responded to leaks that they knew about, you know, with fire department responses, is fairly common, you know, the texts show up, oh, yep, we know about this one, it's a grade two, and it's on the list somewhere. I can tell you, I've made several phone calls to the folks at Columbia Gas and said, unacceptable, we can't be sticking up this neighborhood for three weeks, anything about the south end of town, and they went on and on, just avoided this on us. Secondary, I'd like to see a report from Columbia Gas, every six months, they provide us a work plan, what work they're going to be doing in town, and what's the purpose of that work? Why are they doing it?
Now, did you want us to write this letter, requesting that information go to you?
I certainly will, but I think, I would, I would ask the board, I think it'd be stronger coming from the board to fight with you.
Is this something we could both sign, or we could put together as a joint letter between us and the chief?
Well, I think you're asking the Select Board to request that information to be delivered.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll send, and then the information to go to you.
Yeah.
Mark?
Chief, thank you. I think you remember, and other people remember, that a year or so ago, I tried to put a ban on all but emergency work in Long Meadow. I, I come from a philosophy of work that says the, the level of gas leaks that's acceptable is zero, and, and I think that we ought to, as a board, take that on too, and say that until they fix the leaks, there's, they're not going to continue to, you know, grow their business in the town, in the town of Long Meadow. And that includes everything going on in the town of Long Meadow, whether it's a, you know, tying in our new DPW or our new adult center, if they're supposed to have gas, and I don't even know if they're gas, gas heated, I assume they are. But it also means, you know, they're also not putting in a 14-inch pipeline going down Laurel Street, and, I mean, there's, you know, if you look on Laurel Street, it's around where Farmington is there, there are constantly gas company folks there working on that Valleys Station. I, I support what you're doing, Chief, and I think we ought to go after and say, fix the leaks in the town of Long Meadow before you start doing the other stuff. I just, you know, I just can't understand it, and I'll just say parenthetically, that I spent some time on the phone last year with the then-CEO of the Columbia Gas, and after walking away from that phone conversation, I said, they absolutely have no way, no understanding of how to run a safe operation. You know, they have, they blame it on contractors and subcontractors and sub-subcontractors who have different sets of rules for operating on pressurized gas lines than their employees, and their employees are few and far between to be found, and I think that's just unacceptable. I truly support what the state's done, and think we ought to support the chief.
Well, this, this, so the gas metering station would be covered under this moratorium, they wouldn't be able to move on forward on that?
I, I can't comment on that, I, I would assume so, but, again, you're talking about Tennessee Gas versus Columbia Gas, this first proposal is Tennessee Gas, so.
Okay.
And I don't want to say these are two separate issues, but they're kind of two separate issues at this point.
Tom, can I just respond? Tom, I, I think that, that we have an obligation to let the state know that we don't feel comfortable with Columbia Gas continuing to build in our town, and I agree that Columbia Gas is separate from what Tennessee Gas Pipeline is doing, but Columbia Gas does require, you know, local permitting and state permitting. Tennessee Gas can argue all they want to, they're federally mandated and all that kind of stuff, Columbia Gas needs our support, and, you know, while there's, while there's a leak in the town of Long Meadow, I can't imagine why we let them continue to build.
Thank you.
What, what are residents supposed to do for hookups?
So they say they are going to approve hookups, but they're, they basically need to go to DPU, state the type of work, and even in some of the guidance, and I've been actually speaking with somebody from EOA on how they're going to do this, I think they're still working this out, a little details, but all the information I've gotten, they're going to allow conversions and hookups, other work that's critical or seasonal, DPU's going to allow, so we'll have to see. And that's why I wanted to make sure that our, our chain, banner chain of contact was established, so that's why I did that first thing this morning, so.
Which, my understanding is, they're going to require a different level of supervision, because in the past, for a hookup, they sent out literally a subcontractor to do that, and there's, that's what, that's what happened in Lawrence last, last week or two weeks ago, it was a subcontractor, or a contractor or something.
Yeah, it was actually a sleeve, the bad line with a new line sleeved through it, they left the valves in place, a water, somebody working on the water lines mistook the valves, closed a gas main, I think it was a water main, and it basically sheared a line that was inside of an old line.
But it wasn't a Columbia Gas employee, was the issue?
It was not, it was actually somebody that related to gas, but what they should have done is removed all those valves to make that, I mean, and I'll tell you, I mean, I read how that took place, and it's just completely concerning, I mean, it just makes no sense, why would you leave those valves in place if you're going, I mean, that's an obvious possibility, you know, you know, from industry, and, you know, most, most of those things are avoidable.
Let me get back to the question I asked, because I don't think I got the answer.
Okay.
What about a resident that's, has a new service put in but doesn't have a meter on it yet?
So my understanding is that Columbia Gas still has to seek the approval, but it will, they plan on approving those.
So you handle it, it goes back to Columbia Gas?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm wondering about the work that's occurring right now. I, there seems to be a lot happening in town, I'm not sure how much of it is the gas company? Are you going through each issue one by one?
A lot stopped last week.
It did?
Yes, the, actually, the contractor was on the green, I don't know if they're finished or not, but it just so happens, this letter came out, and the next day, they demobilized a whole bunch of equipment that was parked on the green, so.
Now, are we going to, are we just going to have gaping holes? I mean, if they've stopped work, do they have to mitigate the area?
So Mario did provide a list of open permits, and they're checking on those, I think.
Okay.
I think, did he send it?
He did, yeah.
Sent a copy out. There's about sixteen, don't quote me, enough, 35, 60 open trench permits. I know that they did patch all the work on Long Meadow Street, by the green there.
Okay.
Hot good patches, but patches.
There's something there, Richard, yeah.
Mark?
So, so currently, Columbia Gas doesn't have to notify the town of work they're doing?
Basically, the only, the only notification we get now is if they need a trench permit, or a road cut.
But, but that permit's good for so long, they can take out the permit now and not do anything for two or three, you don't, you don't know the day they're going to show up and do it.
Yeah, some of the permits we have on the list are, are two years old, so.
And I've always suspected, they say they're fixing leaks and they're expanding their pipes, you have no idea what's really happening under the ground.
And that's why, you know, it's part of what I asked for, is, you know, they need to state why they're doing work.
I asked that, that chief, we asked Chief Dearborn to draft the letter that would come from the Select Board, so that we can approve it during next week.
Sure, I would love to have you draft it for me.
Well, it seems to nobody wants to say that.
Yeah, and I did give the information to Jay today, so, so I'll work, they'll delay with Jay on it.
They did, on the question with regards to citizens, the moratorium, the letter states that an exception to the moratorium will be customer service connections and conversions of heating supply for new and existing customers.
Okay. Well, appreciate you being on top of this, and it sounds like you really have for a while now.
Do the best we can.
Any other questions for the chief?
Thank you, Chief.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, we'll look forward to the letter. Get that out.
Going to move back up to our minutes for September 16th, regular meeting?
I believe we approved the minutes of September 16th, 2019's Select Board meeting.
Second?
Discussion, all those in favor?
Please have it.
Library agreement, we're going to have to hold off on that?
21st.
The 21st?
The legal councils need to meet one more time, and the council for the library trustees was out of the country, but back now, so they're scheduling a meeting, yes.
Thank you, and town man, goals, we'll skip for now, town manager search, we put in an offer, and we're still waiting to hear. In regards to streetlight, you want to tell us a little bit what's going on?
Yeah, so, a few of us met last week, or two weeks ago, with, with Eversource, and we also have, I'm going to say, a verification audit being done on our decorative lights. The audit we had done was less than what we would have wanted it to be done. Town of Long Meadow has, well, it's about 850 out of our 1,400 lights, so... Long Meadow has, well, it's, it's about 850 out of our 1,400 lights, so it's, it's over half of them are called decorative, in other words, they're not the standard arms with a, kind of what people think of as streetlights, and, and we actually have, our count is somewhere between 16 and 20 different types of decorative lights, and it sounds, seems like every time a developer put in a sub, sub-development, you know, they put in a different decorative light, whatever was available, and they're all different, and they're going to take a little bit different to, to look at, so, starting October 15th, Tanko Corporation is bringing in a crew to just look at those decorative lights, they're going to make sure that we have all the right things going for the decorative lights, so people in town will see, potentially see people around town just looking at the lights, they'll be doing a, a more detailed audit of, not only is it a decorative, but what version it is and what it takes. And we have also come to some level of agreement with, with Eversource, that our target is September, excuse me, December 1st purchase of our streetlights, so, the December 1st purchase of our streetlights will give us time enough to have them in the town's ownership, and keep us on track for a, I'm going to say May, but it's hopefully a little bit before May, total conversion to LEDs. That's in keeping with a need that by the MAPC, which is the Municipal Area Planning Commission in Boston, who's doing the contracting and bidding for us, to go out for full bids for the town of Long Meadow, for the conversion to street, of the streetlights, so they need to have us own them before they can legally go out and say, you want to convert them, they can do that, meet all their timing requirements, and we expect that to move forward pretty rapidly once the bids go out. We're concurrently, or in parallel, Chad, our, our purchasing agent is, is looking at securing a service contract, it's kind of an interim service contract, because as soon as we own the, own the streetlights, if one fails, or a tree hits one, or one falls on one or something, we got to fix it, and so, we're doing that, we're going to be, unless somebody has some reason, not to, Chad has investigated the best development or best system for a service contract, and it's going to be strictly time and materials, very similar to the one we have on our traffic signals. If something breaks, we're contracted with, we'll be contracted with the company, and we'll be charging us X amount of dollars per hour for their time, and, you know, basically, we pay for the materials that they need, and, and other towns have used the time and materials, it's far better than saying, we'll pay you a hundred, you know, $150,000, whatever it is, and, you know, we really don't want that kind of a open-ended contract, because sometimes you win, sometimes you lose on those, and Chad's, Chad's recommendation is we go with time and materials. So, really where we're going forward is, update on the streetlight purchase is December 1st, we will proceed immediately with the bid of, of the upgrades of them, and we expect that to be completed on or around May, May 15th, based on, and that way, we will, the May 15th date is a hard and fast date, because that's when the current state contract for reimbursements runs out, we will be getting reimbursement from the, from the state, we'll be getting, we have some Green Community money, we'll also be getting money for conversion from the utility themselves, and so, the finances of it look like we're probably going to be able to do this within the amount of money that we've, we've appropriated it at the town meeting. There are no watchouts that we need to look at right now, with one exception, and that is, when we take ownership of these lights, we want to make sure we're buying operating lights, and not buying broken lights, and so, one of the things we've done, and it was in our packet, is we've asked our town resident, town employees, in this case, the police department, to go out and list all the streetlights that need to be repaired, and they've started on that, but we're going to put on a push in the month of November, for town residents to report streetlight outages, so that we buy working streetlights, as opposed to buy lights that are out, that we've got to repair the, the day that we, that we take them over. And so, that, that will be ongoing in the month of, in the month of November, but other than, than that, I think we're in, in good shape to do this, we, I have a lot of good feelings about the company we're working with, Tanko, Eversource, you won't hear this from my mouth again, but has been extraordinarily cooperative with us over this purchase issue, and, you know, to the point where we sent them a list of some lights that we couldn't find in our audit, they said, you're right, we couldn't find them either, and they've taken them off the, the purchase price, and, you know, pretty, pretty reasonably, and so, you know, we're moving right along. I don't know, Mark, you have, if you have anything else?
Yeah, no, that's, that's a pretty good summary, and I think, you know, the state has really put together the timeframe as to, you know, when towns that are doing this have to be, have to meet certain checkpoints, so I think we're on schedule.
Tom, you got a question?
Well, I just, you know, a few years back, we set a standard in terms of, for stoplights, you know, that we were going to have fluted poles and so forth, and is this the kind of thing where we could set a standard for the town for purchase of new decorative lights, or new, or any kind of streetlight, that we could set a standard and say, this is what the select board thinks we should be using in the future, I don't know if we could look at some different examples and then vote on it?
The answer is yes, and we plan on doing that.
Okay.
I think we're probably only going to have one, maybe two choices of the so-called Cobra Heads that go out, I, I think with the decorative lights, we're hoping that they're going to just change the guts and not change the fixtures themselves, which means we'll still be stuck with 18 different fixtures depending on the neighborhood, but I think that they'll come back to us and say, there's a number, and I can't tell you whether that's 20 or 250, but that will need to be changed, the whole fixture, and they'll come back to us with proposals, and we'll probably bring them here.
Right, but as, as new poles are put in, new lights are put in at different parts, we should have a, a standard of what those new lights should be?
Well, I think that's what we're going to do, we're going to come to the select board with, here's what they look, just like we did with the, with the streetlight.
Great, that sounds good, thank you.
Are you saying traffic lights, or are you saying streetlights?
No, streetlights, streetlights, yeah, because, you know, we probably never get them all the same, unless we want to invest a lot of money, but as far as new ones, we should say, this is what we want for new ones, I think that would make sense for us to do that at this point in time, so.
I had a question, this includes the purchase of the poles?
No.
There are, we're not buying utility poles, a utility pole is a pole that has electric wires, cables.
Is there still going to be a lease out there that we have to?
No, there's going to be no lease.
No leases.
So, it turns out that, to the extent that there are utility poles, those are the poles with, okay, it's, it's a, I don't know the, the legal phrase, but essentially, everybody's got rights to everybody else's pole, so some poles are...
They're jointly owned poles.
They're jointly, okay, they're, some are Verizon, some are Eversource, whatever, but all we have to do to put our lights on their poles is to just say, hey, Eversource, Verizon, we're putting your lights on your poles, they gave us the form to fill out, and we just have to fill out the form and submit it, and then we're good to put our lights on our poles, now, if that light burns out, the contractor's obligated to contact them and say, we're working on your pole to replace our light, but there's no fee involved with it at all.
So, we don't have to pay a lease?
There will be, we, we believe that...
As we used to always say, there was huge leases.
Well, right now, we're about $200,000 a year in leases.
Yeah.
That will go to zero on September 1st.
It will, okay, so, no longer have to pay on leases, we'll pay, we own the heads, do they pay property tax on the poles?
They, they, they pay property tax on their utility poles, and they'll do that.
They still will, okay.
Now, remember, there are also a lot in town, these, I'm going to say, three-inch diameter black poles with a decorative light on it, that's all that is, those poles will own, with those fixtures, will own, those poles will not, no longer be paying property taxes on, so, part of our economics is we've discounted their tax payment, that's all built into the, and, and we put in a figure for estimated maintenance costs, and it's still a phenomenal deal for the town, I mean, I, my numbers were something like, starting in year one, we, we save $90,000 a year, because we have to pay the bond, and then starting in year 15, when the bond's paid off, we'll save the whole $200,000, that's for the purchase, now you look at the conversion, it's almost the same kind of numbers in terms of savings, immediate and long-term, in the electricity cost.
And you don't need any money in fall town meeting to complete this project?
We don't need any money in fall town.
And you don't need another set of grants from Green Community?
We, we'll never say never, but we don't believe so.
Okay, all right, so that's a possibility of that money going elsewhere.
Possibility.
Okay, all right, any other questions? No, all right, thank you very much, so let's move back, let's see, let's go to the simple things first, clear them all out of the way, the one-day liquor license for St. Mary's Purse Bingo, is there a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for St. Mary's?
Okay, so the one-day liquor license for, let's see...
November 2nd.
November 2nd, designer of Purse Bingo, I'd like to make a motion to accept that proposal.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion for St. Paul's fundraiser?
I move we approve the liquor license for December 29th, 2019, for St. Paul's fundraiser to be held at St. Mary's 56 Hopkins Place.
Second.
Any further discussion, all those in favor? Okay, for the Center School Halloween Hustle?
Well, a, a street closure application for Halloween Hustle in Greenacre, October 26th, I'd like to make a motion to approve that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor? Okay, great, let's move back up to the Fall Town warrant, I'm going to have to pull my list up, and, oh, what we're doing is, we're not approving the warrant tonight, but what we do is we close the warrant, and I just wanted to review some of the warrant articles too, and I'm trying to find my packet. Here's the packet for me. No, it's not, so, do you want to start just going through each of the articles, Paul, you want to start with Article 1, and see if they have any questions, et cetera?
Article 1 is a requirement that we transfer 10% of the estimated revenues annually to the reserve balances within the Community Preservation Act, those being open space, community housing, and historic preservations, I do have the amounts now, each one of those will be getting $46,520. Those are, those, the 10% of the estimated revenue for FY '20. Number 2 is the $15,000, in order to contract with Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to do a street condition listing, and with some recommended improvement actions and associated costs. Article 3, I know that is written at $20,000, that's a mistake that I had made, it's still good, it should go back to the original request of $45,000, it deals with hiring two firefighters to make sure that we have a full complement of firefighters, while we have two retirements, and we have a couple retirements coming up, currently have one that is on light duty, those funds will be coming out of the ambulance fund, so we can order that we keep that, the second ambulance running during these operations, which obviously, it'll support itself in the long run, and will have an impact of reducing the overtime accounts. Article number 4 is the estimated debt service for the Council on Aging that we will need to appropriate. Number 5 is a bill of prior year that I just discovered, that is relatively new on this addition, it's $100 plus 79 cents, dealing with a advertising bill that somehow slipped through the cracks. Article number 6, we're trying to determine what the exact cost is, that will be the electric charging station, when we redo the parking lot at Town Hall.
I have a question about that, so when does the parking lot due to be done, is it the spring?
That, I'm not even sure off the top of my head either, yet, I, I haven't had a chance to speak with Mario on it, I mean, Andy Carr was doing a lot of that, so I have not had a chance to speak with Mario, I don't know if you know.
I do know.
No, yeah.
Yeah, so, the issue is that the explanation's going to say that this is matched by state funds or something, so that, I mean, because somebody's going to say, why am I spending $46,000 to put an electric charging station for what may be one person who drives an electric car to work?
Again, this is something that Stephen had started, and I know there's a, a ton of paperwork on it, I just haven't had a chance to decipher all that paperwork, in order to get a full listing of all the plans and how it's working out, it could very well be, I, I thought there was a matching share coming from someone.
Yeah, the installation is being done, I think, by Eversource, they're just saying we have to pay for the actual charging station, which could be about $5,000, $6,000, but, does that sound right?
We don't know how much it is though, right, Paul?
So...
Well, Mark, you have...
I think there's some documentation we can find.
There, there's a, there's a slew of documentation, again, it's, it's, there's, there's a lot of documentation, the matter of getting through that documentation to find the answers is another issue.
So, I don't know if Stephen did what we did in Agawam, but there's a, there's a contractor in Boston who does the installation.
Yes.
And then you buy the hardware, Eversource pays for half of the hardware, so our hardware is like $7,000 or $8,000 per station, and we're out of pockets like $3,500.
Yeah, a lot of it will depend on the installation cost, in addition to, when you buy the hardware.
Flip it over, flip it over, no, second side.
Yeah, I didn't see the third one.
No, the second side of this page.
So, if we're not doing the parking lot, we can hold that off?
Again, I, I have not had a chance to speak to Mario on this subject matter, so I, I really, I have to assume, given the construction scene's in almost ending, that we would probably be waiting till spring, but, you know, are we going to do it April 1st, or is it going to be done after the town meeting, that I don't know.
Okay, so we'll just hold off on that, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Article 7 is something that I annually recommend, right now, your goal of raising only 2% of the 2.5% allowable proposition, 2.5 increase leaves about $240,000 in, in excess levy capacity, my recommendation, I know it has not been accepted in the recent past, is to put that money in the operational stabilization fund, and throwing that out for discussion more than anything. Article number 8...
Well, let's, let's stop and talk about that a bit, I was sitting on, like you did last year, Mark, with Moody and Standard Empore, and we, we've got to start bringing up our operational stabilization fund, there's, there's no two ways about it, and there's, there's always a hesitancy on whether we're going to keep our rating, because our fund is way below where we need to have it, and I don't see how we're ever going to get to where we need to be unless we follow Paul's directions, so I've been the one who's been pushing to keep it down, I still say we keep operational stabilization at 1.75, but it's not going to slow us down from hitting the ceiling that much, and it really hurt us on the bonds, which could accelerate us to hitting the ceiling when we start paying these higher bonds, because we lose our rating, so I'm, I'm supporting that article, and that's why I put together these stabilization fund policies, and looking at those later. Mark?
I guess what I don't understand is, that the, if we took the approach of saying we don't want to raise taxes the full 2%, so, to, and it was totally driven by, you know, remember the discussion we had about what the finance committee said, we said to delay the time we get to the ceiling, and we're saying, well, we're going to make up and raise the difference just to put it in the stabilization fund, that negates the whole purpose of holding back the tax rate to 2%.
But, Mark, this, this will not interfere in any way, shape, or form of any of that, because you are not putting this towards repetitive, annualized repetitive operating expenditures.
But we are raising the taxes.
You are raising the taxes, absolutely, and you're putting it in, in your bank account, but to have it, if, if it was in the operating budget, you would expect it would go up 2% or whatever next year, it's not the case with this, so it's not a repetitive type of, of reoccurring expenditure.
It's not going to accelerate, because you're not putting 2.5% on top of, 2.5%, you're, you're going 2.5% above the 1.75, because that's your operational budget, but if we don't do this, we're actually going to run into more financial issues, and I think it's being fiscally responsible to sit down and say, we have to make a commitment to our operational stabilization fund, and I've been pushing back on it for years, but listening, I realized it's a foolish endeavor, and that's why a couple of meetings ago, I said, you know, CAP, the OPEB trust, we've got to start putting in to the operational stabilization fund, I was talking to Eric Weiss about... I was talking to Eric Weiss about this. He's at Pioneer Valley Planning. No, it was not him, it's the head of the MMA, Jeff Beckwith. And Jeff, I says, listen, it's killing us, they're not counting our OPEB fund. He says, of course they're not going to, because you can pull out even on a trust to pay for your retiree benefits. So if we wanted to or needed to, we could take some of that money out and pay towards retirement benefits. He says, but operational stabilization is what they really count on when they talk about how the towns are. I was listening to Lee and Lennox, they share administrator town manager, and he was talking about his fiscally very strict policies, and they're at 7% to 11% in their stabilization fund. He says, that is my target, 7% to 11%, and I went, wow, what are we at? Five and a half? Well, we dipped this year to almost five.
We're just under 7.
We're under 7.
Yeah, we have about, I think it's $4 million in there on a $60 million budget.
What's the highest it's been?
Oh, it is the highest it's been at this point in time.
Okay.
There's no doubt about that. I mean, we were high at a point in time before the October 2011 snowstorm. We knocked it down quite a bit at that point in time, but we are above that at this point.
Okay, that's worth looking at, because I know, you know, we talked a lot about trying to keep it at 2% for the tax rate and...
Well, yeah, but that's operational. Operational, we're still keeping it at 1.75, and squeezing the operational down as much as we can, I think, is important, but this is another aspect. So we don't have to make a decision. This was just my plea for tonight to really seriously consider it because I stopped breathing for a little bit during the Moody's comments.
This is 50 bucks a house. This is another $50 tax per household and lawn, though, give or take. Forty, $40 or something like that.
Right now, it's going to operational stabilization, which can be used for emergencies, but if we don't do this, it's going to be a lot more than that if we lose our rating and our bond rate, or what we pay for our bonds goes up, because we have a lot outstanding.
With all due respect, and this isn't a discussion about what you just said, Marie, but I've been listening for 11 years to people saying our bond rating, our bond rating, our bond rating. Bond rating stayed the same for 11 years with ups and downs and pluses and minuses, and we put money in OPEB and it didn't make any difference, and we take it, not put money in OPEB. You know, I think we've got to do what, you know, what's best and hold down our tax rate. I just, I know that, you know, it's still up to the town residents to vote on it, but I'm not sure they actually understand that we're taxing people to put money into our long-term savings account, not to put money into anything that runs the town today.
All right, so we'll talk about it more on the 21st and whether we'll approve the article. Okay, you want to go on to 8?
Article 8 is covering the cleanup cost of the July 6th, 2019 microburst that hit basically the area around the town green.
That's not two storms? Because I heard there were two storms this summer, or did we already cover the first?
There is later, there is later another expense here, Article 12.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Let's see, that's our, Article 9 is $250,000, which would help us complete Phase 1 of the landfill covering. And I am working on that number and the additional amount for the DPW, and those, this 250 may come down a little bit, just FYI. Article 10 is $100,000 for legal expenses relative to the new DPW facility and the gas facility. I'm probably going to say that it's going to be more than $100,000. We just got bills in today totaling $25,000. I think we had a bill the last couple weeks ago of another $25,000. So I mean, we've already spent $50,000 at least on those two, on those two legal areas. I mean, granted, we can do some now and probably some in the annual town meeting will probably have to use to be supplemented too. Article 6 was a 25% match for what was believed to be a $260,000 grant dealing with municipal vulnerability program. I think the fire chief is still working on that, per se. So that one may or may not be withdrawn at this point in time.
Oh, really? He doesn't think the judge is going to come through?
I'm not sure. He had some second thoughts on that one, but he's working on it. I told him, I don't need a number now, and I don't need a final decision now. I told him by the 21st, we will certainly need to have that, a final yea or nay there. Article 12, again, is for the forestry budget, $140,000. This would assume the, again, what he's spent already to cover that second storm that we had, plus what he's already done for a backlog of tree removals and things of that nature. David Marinelli, again, is here. I think he spoke to it about somewhat the last time, that $140,000. He's looking for, and then an additional $25,000 in Article 13 for a backlog of tree planting requests that he has. Article 14 is another transfer to the operational stabilization fund, but this would be from available funds in the treasury. The board has a policy that anything over $500,000 that is remaining in free cash after all the fall town meeting articles are taken care of would go into the operational stabilization fund. This amount is an estimate based upon what I'm expecting for free cash, which I hope is certified this week, and then subtracting all those previous articles, there's still about $95,000 above the 500 that could be transferred. Article 15, I am working still with Colliers on reconciling what they believe an estimated shortfall would be to the town accountant's records. So we'll be working on that as time goes on.
Paul, before you go on, just a quick question. Why are we having separate articles for 12 and 13?
We could certainly combine them. I think they were separated because I originally had written one, and David actually came in with two others. One was specifically for the microburst, per se. I mean, we can put them together, they're all going to the same spot technically. Let me look at that.
Well, it's interesting because you said 140, and then the other is 175, because they said we couldn't get reimbursed because we weren't over 250.
So, Marie, I'm not asking about...
Per incident, though.
I'm not asking about Article 8. Article 8 is one incident.
Okay.
Article 12 is a different incident, but Article 12 and 13 seem to be...
On Article 8, we accounted for Article 8 as a special article. We didn't account for it in the operating budget because if we were going to get reimbursed, we wanted to have all the expenditures in one special article, so that's why the separation.
Oh, I get that. I get keeping 8 separate. I was just talking about combining 13 and 12.
I think we have two separate line items in the budget.
One for planting?
One for planting and one for trimming and removal.
Okay.
We did make a point of having a line item for planting, because if we didn't have a line item, we wouldn't be funding it as much.
Right. There are two separate line items in the operating budget. Article 16, I believe we're at, is it 2?
No, 15.
15.
Oh.
Did we have a number yet?
No, I just said I've been working with Colliers to try to reconcile that, and we do not have a number as of yet. Article 60 is for Phase 2 of the closing of the Bernie Road, Tino Lane landfill. There's an estimate from Ty and Bond of $2 million.
Can I pause, Frank?
What's the timing that's required for us to do that for the DEP?
Next year.
Next year, meaning fiscal year 21?
Right. Well, calendar year 2020. So what they expect is, they envision is in November, December, a discussion with DEP relative to the Phase 2 work, and a work plan and a timetable, which would be envisioned potentially of going out and advertising for Phase 2 in the spring of 2020, which would still be in this fiscal year, with the work to be done later. That's what they're envisioning. There's no timetable yet from DEP with regards to a specific order, except that the information is that they expect the Phase 2 to be done in 2020.
When I read this, Marie, you know, it comes across as we're pulling a number out of thin air, and it would seem to me to be more salable and more realistic if it said to authorize the treasurer to borrow up to the sum of $2 million.
I mean, we can put that in the warrant article, but when we get to the motion...
It's got to be an actual...
Right, right.
I can understand that, Paul, but...
But we can still borrow, I mean, even if it's authorized for 2 million, we don't have to borrow the 2 million.
I know, but the way people are going to read this, they're going to jump and say, where'd you come up with, as you said, up to 2 million? I mean, we can then make the motion for $2 million.
Well, we put out...
You have an estimate. You do have, the basis is the memo from Ty and Bond dated September 4th, where they have a number of $2 million.
But it's not bid, it's just their estimate.
That's correct.
Didn't we get just bids in? What was the bid set?
That's Phase 1.
That was Phase 1?
Yes.
Oh.
I'm just talking about salability and perception of this thing.
The cost is, it's broken out on the $2 million, but, yeah, I mean, in the sense of going up too, that's their projection right now as we sit here relative to the Phase 2 cost, yes.
Question for the board. We've talked about the release of bond money from the governor. How about we write a letter to the governor requesting the release of the bond money to pay for our capping? Is the board agreeable to that?
Sure.
Jake, we'll let you write that, since everyone's writing it for me.
It would give me pleasure, not a problem at all.
Why do we have Phase 1, Phase 2 broken into different articles?
It could be combined. It's, Phase 1 is clear in the context. I think the theory was Phase 1 is clear because we have a definitive work plan from DEP, and the bid has already been in relative to cost. Phase 2 is to be determined, but is based on the projection from Ty and Bond. It certainly could be combined together. I would have no problem myself with regards to combining the two articles if you wanted to, to one, but it does reflect individually where the phases are.
The other thing, they're also coming from two different funding sources. One is coming from free cash, the other one is coming from a bond issue. I mean, you can still do it, but...
I just wonder why, there's two, I mean, is there a Phase 3?
No.
No. You hope not. Two will be...
Unless they find another landfill down there.
So the total cost is, what, 2.3 million?
No, we've also authorized an $800,000 bond. It's over 3 million.
About 3 million altogether?
Yeah, this is a consent order that's been sitting there for...
Oh, yeah.
And the governor set aside 5 million, so the money's sitting there. We can just get him to release it.
Right.
Well, why don't you just trot up to Boston tomorrow?
Well, you should have a picket.
We can drop, I'll drop something on it, that's fine.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Article 17, according to Mario, didn't make the warrant last spring. It's the replacing of water mains on Fairview Street from a 6-inch to a 8-inch main, something that was done through the Ty and Bond report of 2008. Article 18, I believe...
It was disapproved?
It was not disapproved, it never made the warrant.
Because we did have some water line changes.
Yes, you did, but you didn't have one for Fairview Avenue.
And is it something that should be done now, or...
Yeah. It's a 4-inch height.
Okay.
The last of the 4-inch lines.
Yeah. They're going 6 instead of 8. Yeah, I questioned that too, the 6-inch line?
That's what I'm told.
Okay. Put a question on that one.
18, I'm not sure. Should we go ahead with any charter changes at this point, or should we wait till the new town manager comes in?
Yeah, but this one is only making or memorializing the permanent building committee in the charter. That's all that it is. It's nothing more than that because they are not identified other than through select board.
Why do we have to memorialize them in the charter though?
Look, I didn't make this up, I think you've always talked about this a while ago.
No, this came out of the charter.
Charter committee. I thought it was accepted that you folks wanted to move forward with it.
I don't think we ever had a discussion on it. I just wondered why would we arbitrarily just put this committee in the charter?
Well, why don't we wait and have that discussion with the new town manager and decide? I mean, I don't know if we have to push that for this fall town meeting. How do you guys feel?
I don't, I agree with Richard, you know, I mean, there will come a time in this town where we don't need a permanent building committee. We're not a very active one, and to have it in the charter, we're going to be challenged to find people to fill it and all that kind of stuff.
So why don't we cross out 18?
Sounds good to me. Article 19 is petitioning the state to revoke the article that was approved at the Maytown meeting for the changing of the Board of Registars to a Board of Election Commissioners?
That'll be rewritten, that's being rewritten now.
Okay.
So just to make, for clarity's sake, the interest of the Board of Registars, the existing registrars, they thought what they were getting was really just one more member, two from each party, but the truth is, it eliminates the clerk's role and would put more of, it's perceived to put more of a work obligation on the four registrars. So what they're interested in is moving forward to go back to the, or maintain the existing system, which would stay in place right now under further research until April 1st of next year. So the concept is that if the town meeting would approve, they would authorize the board to convey a request, a home rule petition with the legislature to allow the town to revoke it. Otherwise, town council believes it's a three-year window with regard, once a state act is accepted, it's three years before it can be revoked. So we would go to the legislature and ask them to revoke it and maintain the current situation.
The hottest topic at the public forum.
It may, yeah, was it, yeah.
And 21 is Mark's.
Oh, 20.
20 is to, again, and put the memorialize in the bylaws that the polls will be open.
Was it from 7?
Yeah, can we change that from 7:00 in the morning till 8:00 in the evening?
That's what it's supposed to be.
It already says 8 to 8. We want it from 7 to 8. And I think the explanation ought to say to make our local election polling hours consistent with the state and federal election polling hours.
And 21, how does that sound to you, Mark?
Fine.
That, I dropped my language, you just kept yours, Mark.
I do have one other, which is the historic district bylaw. So at the April, or the Maytown meeting, the historic commission, their historic district bylaw was approved. Unfortunately, the AG has rejected that on the basis that the historic district is required to provide a update and a recommendation to town meeting prior to the actual vote going, and that was not done. So the idea is to resubmit it as, and to send it to the historic district. They have, their recommendation is good for 60 days, to ask them to take action on it prior to the acceptance by the, or being the vote of the town meeting.
Can it be a special town meeting? It could be any town meeting, it doesn't have to be the annual?
It can be the special. I've gone over that with legal counsel.
All right, good.
You know what, I'm going back and I'm looking at what Mario said, it should be an 8-inch water main on Fairview.
That's my error.
There were two other issues for warrant articles. One I wanted to bring up, the Wolfswell Fields, when they go to do it, there's a question on where everyone's going to go, and one of the solutions is Glenbrook. But Glenbrook has a broken irrigation system. So I asked, well, how much is this irrigation system going to cost? And Mario couldn't get me a final, he got a verbal, not a written, estimate of about $50,000. So I wanted to bring that back to the board about, I don't know, do we have the money anywhere to be able to deal with that issue?
Do you do that all through the CIP, or do you do that?
No, this would be, this, no, it's not in capital planning at all. This is completely out of the system.
I mean, you can add it, and then you'll just reduce Article 14, the amount of money that goes into the operational stabilization.
Stabilization fund.
It'll come somewhere.
So what are they going to do?
Why don't you take it out of the money that was appropriated to do the fields?
What can we do?
It wasn't appropriated for Glenbrook, it's appropriated for...
Well, it was appropriated to do the fields, it had to be an ancillary cost to that.
Do we have to put, does that have to be a warrant article to do that?
I think you probably have to amend the article.
Study or something, Paul?
Again, I think you're talking about a whole other field, I think it's a little bit above and beyond the scope.
What are they gonna do if they have to rent fields?
We're gonna have to come up with the money outside of the bond.
The Glenbrook fields need to be repaired anyway. So the question, I mean, they're, they're down the street from where I live, they're dumb. I mean, they're just terrible.
Well, that's not gonna make it better, just water.
No, but, but without it, it's never gonna have a chance of getting better.
How long's it been broke?
Forever.
Long time.
Forever.
But all I'm saying is that, that, you know, we oughta just look at it like any other, you know, irrigation repla, repair program that we have.
Well, I, I agree with you 100%, but why? And the devil is before the board now.
Well, that's.
It's been broke for years. And no, it was never a problem, now all of a sudden it's a problem. It's always been a problem.
Well, I think, yeah, it's always been a problem, but I think now that you're fixing the Wolfswamp Fields, it's now becoming a.
It knocks the dominoes down. I mean, yeah, the, the fields need, need attention.
We've had kids playing on that field for year after year.
Yeah, they're starting to get hurt, so I was talking to an out-of, out-of-town parent whose kid tore their knee at.
The irrigation system's not gonna change that though.
But that you can't, as Mark said, you can't, you can't make it better without the irrigation system.
Well, there's no improvement plan for that field though, let's get that straight.
No.
Right.
Yeah, and that's unfortunate, cause it needs to be improved.
Well, you know, there is some money probably in the rotating fund, maybe the, the ball groups will, will kick in some money, but I, I, I think it's an issue. I know it's the last minute on October 7th to consider this, but the two, and they don't have to make a decision tonight, cause we have till the 21st, but the two issues, we could put a placeholder in. The other one is the hazardous material bylaw, and to be honest, I've just been so overwhelmed with everything else I've been having to deal with the past two months. And someone recommended, the chief recommended one from East Long Meadow, but I could not find that anywhere. And he says that worked really well, especially when they had to deal with those gas trucks that were gonna come through. And that actually blocked that from happening. But this Burlington one I sent to you, it seems to be a good one too. But you don't have to decide if we could just leave those two as placeholders when we close the warrant, we can make a decision to kick them out or to, to deal with those on the 21st.
I think it would be good to have something that has to do with limiting gas, you know, and, and protection, cause people.
But that's not what this is, Tom.
No, if it, if it limits the, what happened in East Long Meadow, so trucks couldn't come and move gas.
Yeah, well, it, it minimizes how you can handle hazardous materials in the town.
Yeah, so it would, yeah, I'd be up for having something like that.
Maria, you know, we just got this today, so I, but I think I made comments to you that I, I wanna make sure there aren't any unintended consequences, cause the first draft we had would have impacted, because of the way it was written. Anybody with a commercial refrigeration unit, and there, you know, all the, everybody would have been reporting left and right, and, you know, we would have impacted our, you know, not just gas stations with underground tanks, but everybody in their home who had a gas fuel tank. And I think we gotta make sure that we're not causing a lot of problems we didn't intend to cause, so.
Would you be willing to work with it on me?
I'll, I'll, I'll be glad to look through it, but that's my only concern.
There should also be a couple of articles for easements, Dwight Road Project and the North Interceptor Sewer.
Right.
That are not on there yet.
Oh, we're gonna have, he's gonna get those together for the 21st, right?
I.
Cause he said he really needs those.
Let's see, objective, yes.
But again, there's a little list there at the end of whatever.
The sewer and what, what's the other one, Paul, beside the North Interceptor?
Dwight Road Project.
Right, at the end of Article 21, there's a little list of other ones that potentially are gonna be on the warrant.
So if we close the warrant, do we just say included the potential warrants, or do we not close the warrant?
You can't close the warrant.
Yeah, we can close it.
And then we gotta reopen it.
Yeah, we just put the most.
And why do we close it?
Well, we have that debate every year.
I know.
We can leave it open, I don't care.
I say we just leave it open.
It doesn't matter, yeah.
Okay, so those are the ones that are still out there, and if you guys could give me your opinion, you know, what we're gonna do with the, the Glenbrook irrigation.
It's not, not a reflection on town manager, town manager's doing a fantastic job, but just for once, I'd like to see a proposal brought to this table that wasn't rounded off at $50,000 or $25,000. I would like to see an.
For how much, $2 million?
$49,999.
Somebody go out and look at that irrigation system and put in an actual bill and say, this is what it will cost.
I said, can you get me the quote, and he said he wouldn't come out, and the only thing they do is give him on the phone.
Well, we've got people in this town that are very competent at looking at sprinkler systems.
That's true.
If nothing else, I'll volunteer my services, and I'll go over and look at the system.
He's doing the hazardous, he'll take care of the irrigation.
That's right.
That's your job.
But it is no reflection on our outstanding intern town manager.
Taken that way at all. I certainly understand that. We can break it to, perhaps to even to pennies, even to pennies, we can break it to, thank you.
I've never seen proposals come out, 50,000, 100,000, 200,000.
No.
So we'll leave you in charge of irrigation. Let's go and see what you find. All right, so the other thing is OPEB trust and stabilization fund policies, but I think we really started the discussion on whether we're gonna do that warrant article. And so we can continue that the next time. The only other thing is, I wanted to talk about goals, the budget directives. I know you weren't here, Richard, that we did increase the levy to only 1.75, we're capping OPEB contribution at 500K. I think those were the only two directives we came out with at this time, was there something else?
Well, yeah, there, and again, it goes back to, we probably do need an answer very shortly, especially the budget calendar has this meeting with the school committee on the 21st, also doing budget assumptions. But the last one is, is that we were going to take money in it from, during the annual budgeting process and put it into the operational stabilization fund.
Right. To find a way of.
Right, so what I, what I have done in the current assumptions is because OPEB was at $728,000. I've now included a line to put into the operational stabilization fund for 225, which is the difference basically between the 50728.
So if I'm reading this right, you waited till I got, while I was out of town then?
Right.
Well, you keep going to wonderful places, it's easy to do. We didn't touch capital.
Yeah.
We didn't, I said, we're not touching capital.
275 whacked out of that program, annually.
Gotcha.
We're.
Don't teach me.
Don't teach me.
Should have been on vacation.
The other thing I wanted to talk about was, if we do decide to do this on a long-term basis, we need to change the policies.
Right.
Because we don't want to just ignore our policies, we wanna follow policies.
You're overruling his policy.
Yeah, because I'm worried about the stabilization fund.
That's why I'm always concerned that we put a policy in instead of making it firmer so that we can't get chairs to mess around with funds later. You know, it, it does happen to the best of us.
Yes, it definitely does.
We do have to do what we have to do.
Now, I'm gonna drop another possibility, and that is for us to talk about a new position in town. And that is whether we wanna say, call it a grant writer, whether we wanna call someone to help with planning and development. But we, right now, the town manager is dealing with operations, planning and development, and the only problem with that is there's a lot of grants out there. And I don't think we're, anyone has the time to set aside, I was talking to the chief, he said that the MVP, he's sitting there by himself, dealing with these meetings, and everyone else is coming with a team of grant writers. And planning development people from other towns, and some of them are equivalent, and it's something that I know we've been talking about back and forth for a while. We don't have to decide today, but if we wanna consider that position, we really have to put it as part of the budget directive.
I, well.
As Tom was.
Yeah, I was just saying that, you know, we've done pretty well with grants, obviously, and I think the last town manager we had, Stephen, did a good job of keeping on top of a lot of stuff, and he, he managed to turn out stuff. But before we made a decision like that, I'd really wanna know what the next town manager's capabilities are, and, and get their recommendations on something like that. Cause it seems like a great idea. A lot of places have them. I don't know what department they would fall under, but, yeah, you, you know, when you, we've got a lot of money from grants, and we could get more, I agree, so.
Mark?
Yeah, you know, grant writing kinda falls in the same, same category for me as a, as a fundraiser for a nonprofit. The issue's gonna say, where do we put it in the budget, but I think that if we put that salary for a grant writer in the budget, I think we have to identify areas where there's gonna be an appropriate amount of money to, to pay for that. If the grant writer is bringing in funding that does new, new and better things, that's all great, but that means we also need people to implement those new greater things, and we don't, we don't have those. If the grant writer's bringing in money to supplement our current budget to help us do the things we do better, or with state or federal grants, you know, that's, that's a whole different story. And I think we need to decide which approach we wanna take, because they both have, you know, I mean, if you, if you take the, the former approach of, of doing new and better things. What you end up with is a grant writer who costs you for the grant writer, and they cost you to, because all these new grants are all 25% of, of town, or they paid 75%, and the town's gotta come up to 25%. And the question is, can we afford all that stuff? And so I think we need to decide, what do we want a grant writer to do before we just go and hire a grant writer? Mark, I know you do that for a living, I think you oughta comment in as well, but, yeah, I mean, I, I'm surprised that we don't have anybody in town dedicated to planning and development, I know what Stephen was, but just knowing how, how much I do, and then, then seeing what he does, and that's, that's a huge ask of any one person. I certainly do grant writing, and I do grant management administration, but if, so if, if you wanna have a grant writer who would cover more than just, you know, planning and development and community development, that, that would be somebody else, I think.
What do you recommend? Where do you think would be the most value here?
I don't see how we cannot have a planning and development person. I just, I mean, you know, it's, the town's built out, and it's beautifully planned, so, so, you know, that mitigates the need. But there's so many things that come through my office that occurs to me in Long Meadow, and, you know, I pass it along to the, to the town manager, but, I mean, that town manager has 54 things going on at a certain time.
I think one of the things that they said on Saturday, which I found very interesting, they said, when you hit your ceiling, it, actually, it wasn't, I was talking to Jeff from the MMA. He says, when you hit your ceiling, you can no longer match grants, so it becomes even more devastating to your operational budget. And more and more programs are coming out that are being funneled like MVP, where, so the money is coming through to the towns, but the towns have to create programs and, and write grants in order to get the state money. So I think it's becoming more valuable, important now than it did five years ago.
You know, aside, you know, I agree with their understanding, but, you know, we also did give Stephen a assistant town manager too, to help him in that distribution of that work. That's not a problem, it's Paul. There's Paul.
Paul was so busy.
I don't even think you wanna get me started. I'll leave it at that. That was what we did.
I think one thing to keep in mind on, if you're doing grants, is it's not only the authorship of the grant itself and funding, there's also reporting requirements thereafter too. So not only do you have the obligation there, you have fiscal requirements that have to be met, oversight, and it also necessitates project management during the project, and then it requires closeout afterwards too. So all of those are inherent in some form of even grants that are being received right now in various elements of people's position. All of those things need to be considered also.
Well, even stuff like green communities, Paul's having a tough time just tracking our green community money that's gotten, you know, and that oughta be.
Well, we have one, the other, that just came with regards to just the Green Communities Act annual report. Who is it exactly who files that? And they said, you know, feel free to go through the spreadsheet with the five attachments and see what, you know, and that's.
That's a bear. Do we, do we have a green communities coordinator?
No.
Not good on the aware.
Not anymore.
I'm desperately seeking one, so, I mean, I, we're looking around right now to see how it is they've responded in the past on it.
Well, it hasn't, we haven't responded correctly, and then Stephen thought he was doing it correctly, and then he realized the portal wasn't responding the way he thought. And so I understood there's all this reporting that we've gotta catch up on, and we haven't requested a green community grant since 2013.
Right.
Okay, so the money's been sitting there, and so that meant every year we lost $100,000, is that?
No, we're, I mean, we're, we got, we're every two years an ad lib, we got 250 the first year, and a little more than 200 this past year.
So, you know, there's been money left on the table, and it's just, cause there's just not enough time.
Yeah.
For people to, to get it done.
Absolutely.
So that was just to bring it up, we don't have to make a decision tonight, these are just things to think and percolate on where we're going, and so the three things I brought up were the pilot projects, pilot agreements, and task force on sharing services, and then the grant writer.
Well, what, what else are we gonna do on the grant writer? Are you gonna give a proposal back for us to look at, or what are we gonna do by next step?
Do you want to?
I think.
Write a proposal on what that would cost, and what we would be looking at?
You can, I mean, I think there's some other elements too, if you're looking at different positions or thinking about things, I think there's some other things you could think about in context besides simply the grant, but you can do the grant. You could also include the grant in, in some other position, if you're creating it, where they were doing other responsibilities too, as a part of their job duties. But, you know, if you do that, it would, you know, you've got the project management portion of, I mean, you've got the, developing the grant, you have to seek out the grant, you have to visualize the grant. You have to be able to see the game plan for it. It may be a subject matter you're not familiar with, or you're writing grants for different groups across the board, trying to figure out that. And then, you know, you're, you have to get the match, and then the greatest challenge of all is, oh, Lord, I, we got the grant. Which means now we actually have to work with it. And that's a whole process of the paperwork that comes in there, following up and things like that. So, I mean, I'd be happy to explore a little bit on it and conceptualize as, you know, having done grants before for the city of Springfield, I'm happy to take a look at it, but it is, it's a challenge, but it, you know, right now, people are doing various grants that you're getting. And you're looking around to see whether or not somebody can do it, or if they have time to do it, and it's, you may be losing stuff, you may not, may not be evaluating it in total with regards to some of the impact. And then there's always the point where the grant runs out, and then you, you know, what are you doing at that point? You accept the fact that suddenly it becomes 75% of the cost, which might have been borne by the grant, is now, in order to keep it going, necessitates you, the town considering including it in their operating budget or some other source, so.
I guess what I was asking was, what do you want to bring before the board for approval?
Well, if we agree that we wanna do this, then we would be asking the budget, one of the directives would be to budget for this position. We're talking about actually increasing, creating a new position.
Well, yeah.
And that's a budget directive.
We're gonna request that a proposal be brought to us for?
Yeah, you could request, if you put together a proposal, that's something we can vote on, and decide, and what we think this would cost.
What's the cost is, what kind of person, staffing, hours, and grade, and whatever?
Sure.
I mean, I know, we were talking, at the MMA, they were talking about this type of position is shared between towns sometimes, up in the Berkshires. But even the small towns have someone who is doing that these days.
They have good bourbon up there, too.
So if you could bring something back to us on the 21st?
Sure.
Is that gonna give us enough time on your budget?
I, I, I would prefer not even to put it into the assumptions and just have it be the part of the, more of just the development.
Okay, okay.
That way we'll have the assumptions all set, and, again, and, I mean, Jay will probably just put something in draft, and the new town manager's probably gonna have to carry.
Take a look at it, yeah.
Carry the ball afterwards.
And we don't have a joint meeting set up, I've sent out a quest for the schools, have you heard back from them?
I have not heard back from them, I'm just saying it was on the budget calendar for the 21st.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else for tonight?
Yeah, so I guess the, the way we're leaving it though, you're not gonna try to put it in this year's budget?
We, we, we'll put it in the FY 21 budget when we're preparing it, we're not going to put in the budget assumptions.
So we need to get a proposal in front of the board for the next meeting that's really fleshed out better, on what that position would look like, and hopefully, if we have a town manager on board for that, she could.
I probably will do that and share a few other thoughts, as I have, as I work my way through it, yeah.
Maria, I liked your idea, oh, I'm sorry, about perhaps, maybe with East Long Meadow, if we had a preser, a person who could serve both towns, that would be a.
Well, I think they have their own planning and development person.
Oh, they do?
Oh, yeah.
Well, maybe they'll share them with us. And we'll pay some salary, and that might be a better way to do it.
Yeah, we'll see. I, I think she's working full-time for him, it's, it's a pretty heavy duty position now.
They've got a pretty good-sized program too.
Yeah. Okay, anything else for tonight's meeting?
One thing I just, since you bypassed the interim manager's report.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, no, no. I'm a little hurt, but I recognize it's interim. It's fine. It's very flexible here. Just a couple, very quickly. The, we are meeting this week on the diff matter with the project proponents to go over the, get their input relative to costs. And then I'll be able to, we'll be able to report back to you at the next meeting if we think anything is, should be adjusted or not. But we're doing that. We're also setting up a meeting on the Colvis matter with their legal counsel, our legal counsel, to go over the issues that the town council raised with you at the last session. We are preparing to move forward on the Phase 1 landfill award. We have been holding on the basis because one of the requirements was that there be an evaluation of vegetation for, relative to endangered species. So we have had a firm looking at the landfill site, both Phases 1 and 2. They have determined that, in a report that they filed last week with the state, National Heritage, that there was the endangered species that were identified were not found on site. That allows us then to move forward to award the contract to the low bidder, which is salt marsh. And they had a bid of $736,000 altogether. They were by far the low by about $230,000, $40,000 from the next bidder. The next phases of that will mean that we would expect and hope, with all the paperwork being filed back and forth, that, and we still have not gotten endangered species to sign off, National Heritage to sign off, but the expectation is that will not be an issue. Conservation also needs to sign off. It was one of their requirements that it be filed, that the work could commence by the beginning of November of this year. The, it's projected to be about a 12-week project. The state is requiring, has in their requirement that there be substantial completion done on Phase 1 by November 22nd, which would mean, which is questionable whether we would hit that date. But what we believe, and I think that's shared with tie and bond, that the state will recognize that the bid has gone out, but that we had to wait with regards to the endangered species and the work related to it. So the work would be done. That will involve capping, placement of the cap, placement of sand, placement of soil above the cap, and vegetation. Some of that work may not be completed likely until spring, given where we are. But the bid price was to not do it and move forward with the, the low bidder would necessitate us going back out and rebidding again, which would mean that we would not be doing any work until spring. And we'd have to be explaining to DEP why we're not. So our plan is to move forward with them, get them on board this week at least, acknowledging it. They're going to file their information. They'll hold their bid price and we will move forward on it.
Can I just ask a quick question? Is somebody writing the specifications for that closure within, I mean, we don't have a town engineer now and...
Consultant.
The consultant has worked with DEP, and so they have the plan with regards to closure that DEP has signed off on Phase 1. Phase 2, the general concept is approved, that the specifics need to be clarified in the timetable with DEP.
One of the things we said is we want this graded with a south-facing slope for potential, that's all in there? Kind of, people not aware that's...
As far as I know, yeah. As far, the DEP consent order with regard approval on Phase 1 is based on what was submitted to DEP. I've got it. I just have, yeah. And it'll be a cap, a membrane cap, plastic membrane cap over that, and then the vegetation.
Right, so when the vegetation is going to be put out there?
Yep.
Do they take into account the rainy season in the spring? Like, because a lot of it could be washed off also, couldn't it be? I mean, do they?
Right, no, they'll have a response. Before they'll sign off on Phase 1, they'll have to see that the vegetation has taken. So that would be probably April or May by the time that they sign off on it, once they see the vegetation taking. It depends a little bit, you know, if they could get, I have doubt that they'll be able to do the vegetation by this point. Or if they do, then they very well could come back for a lot of it thereafter. But the potential of at least capping it and getting some soil on top is still real, assuming the weather holds up for us. And assuming DEP is not, which I don't think, we don't think they will, fervent with the November 22nd, as long as we are showing we're making progress as a community moving forward on their order.
That is a good question. Do you have any update possibly on Tina Road on the railroad crossing?
Still blocked. I don't have a timetable on that. We talked about that. I can get that for you though.
Just, I have a question. Because I've been knowing several times, there's a lot of work going on, so.
One of the things that Senator Lesser said on Saturday is he said, there's so much commitment to the rail. They're going to double rail between New Haven and up to Greenfield, which means we're going to look at a double rail coming down Long Meadow at some point in time.
There's a double rail there, isn't there?
Is there? I thought it was a single one.
Well, they're different directions.
Yeah, there's a double rail.
There is a double rail. I thought it was single. Okay.
Two other items really very quickly. One is, we're moving forward to bring a firm on to do the required traffic study for the MGM. The previous firm, CDM, you can see it, Renee Hagan, has concurred that they will do it, but they haven't given a price yet, so we'll take a look at that. According to the contract, as I understand it, MGM is the one who pays for it, but the work needs to be done within 15 months, so we'll do that. The other item is, I'm planning on meeting with the MIA representative. We're talking on the phone on, earlier, later this week, to talk about the idea of if MIA can provide some support for us in the implementation of the new Department of Labor requirements on implementing OSHA standards in Long Meadow. I'm particularly interested in whether or not they can be supportive in doing, allowing us to do a safety audit and developing policies and procedures related there too. I also sent some information there as grants available, speaking of grants, related to IT. And I've conveyed information, up to $200,000 from the state, information to the IT director with regards to the idea of developing policies and procedures related to cybersecurity and also doing a penetration test to determine whether or not, how strong the firewalls are here and to determine whether or not they can monitor, how effectively they can do to monitor it. So he's taking a look at that. I know he was attending a presentation on cybersecurity also, so. Thank you.
I just had one question. When the chiefs were here, they didn't talk about the Westcom opening. Is that still a ribbon-cutting of the 21st?
I don't know. I think that's going to be posted.
I think it's, they're moving now into December at that point, so I don't have a date with regards to that. They're still kind of working their way through. I think December is the last I heard with regards to it.
Because I think, it's important that we, I think we should be invited.
Oh, absolutely.
We've missed some other ones that I thought we should have been invited to also, and so, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Yep.
Second? All those in favor? Thank you for joining us. We'll be back on the 16th, right? Monday, no, is that the 21st? We'll be back on the 21st. Thank you.